How we need to report the year.
I'll please stand for the pledge of allegiance. Are there any changes to the agenda?
There are no changes to the.
Okay, anyone want to make a motion to approve the agenda as written?
So moved.
Anyone want a second?
I'll second.
Right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, public comment, this is the opportunity to comment on items not listed on the agenda. Announcements?
We do have one announcement, and that is that Jake has accepted a planning position with the city of Prairie Lake, so his last day will be next week.
Wow.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Yes.
And thank you for all you've done.
Thank you, guys.
Yeah, good luck.
Stay in touch, it's a small world.
Yeah, in the county still.
Excellent.
So, Warren, I think one time you were here and talking about, and I think one time you.
I can't.
No, sorry.
I forgot. What am I hearing these guys are doing? You said, Warren, why go meeting like this? I have to stand.
I think one time Warren was visiting with us and he was, had a land use application at the city of Prairie Lake, and he said, I wish you guys worked in Prairie Lake. So now you know. Yeah, Jake is going to Prairie.
Oh, yes. Good training project there.
Probably won't take that one, but maybe a future one.
Not yet, no.
Okay. Just follow her. Thank you.
Great. Consider approval of the minutes for May 27th, 2025. I didn't notice anything, I don't know if anybody else did. Nope.
No.
I'll make a motion to approve them, anyone want a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Public hearings. A Boulder Point Eighth Edition KJ Walk Incorporated applicant, consider application of his own property PUD. And this is a continued public hearing for the preliminary plat approval.
Thank you. Let's see. I'm kind of skip through it, we don't have anyone new here in the audience from last week, so I'm going to skip through a lot of the background information. Warren Israelson, one of the applicants is in the audience, if we have any questions afterwards, he's here to answer them. So basically, what they're looking to do is take the pool lot, move the property line for the clubhouse, and transfer that into two residential lots. It does meet density requirements for the city, the only hang up was that they did not meet the city's minimum square footage for lot size or lot width. Since then, they have changed that, so now they do meet the city's required lot size for square footage. They are still seeking PUD approval for lot width, that does not meet the city's minimum requirements, and also side yard setbacks, which do not meet the city's side yard requirements. So as you can see here. Get to it. Skip ahead to the table. So the minimum lot width in the city's R1 district is 85 feet, the proposed lot width for both of the residential lots in Boulder Point Eighth Edition are both 77 feet proposed. Minimum side setback for R1 district is 10 feet minimum, proposed seven feet for Boulder Point Eighth Edition. The city's building officials commented saying that he would suggest nothing less than seven feet for side yard setbacks for building code and fire reasons. So staff recommend approval of the applicant's application to rezone proposed lots one and two, Boulder Point Eighth Edition, to a new planned unit development district due to the following reasons. The development of the property is compatible with the surrounding land uses. The proposed development containing two residential units on 0.59 acres meets the intent of the city's 2040 comprehensive land use plan, which guides the property as low density residential. The required density is two and a half to five units per net acre, 3.39 units per acre are proposed as part of this project. And noting those differences from the city's R1 low density residential district as pointed out below. The plat shall be developed in accordance with the following plans, and the city engineers redline plans dated 5/20/25, and also staff's redline plans. We have the same 14 conditions from last time that are imposed as part of the the applications for preliminary and final plat. And I will read those conditions back into the minutes. And then here is the updated plan that shows the larger lot widths with the property line shifting a little farther towards the east. So the public hearing has been continued, notices were mailed to all the property owners again within 350 feet, notice was published in the newspaper. Nobody is online, so I'm not going to go through the Zoom stuff, but we can open the public hearing whenever you'd like, Madam Chair.
Okay, thank you, I will open the public hearing at 7:10 PM. So if anyone has any comments or anything they want to ask, please approach the podium, state your name and address for the record. I'll ask again, if anyone has any comments or questions or anything regarding Boulder Point Eighth Edition, please come to the podium, state your name and address for the record. City engineer has something to say, yes.
Forty-four.
Okay. And I will ask a third time. If anyone has any comments regarding Boulder Point Eighth Edition, please come to the podium, state your name and address for the record. All right, I will close the public hearing at 7:11 PM.
So I was just wondering Jake, if you ca, I think I copied you, I got her question from, who's your guy in the office? Patrick about storm drainage. And so when I looked at it, I sent back, they either could run up, run a line up to along Glenboro, over to the next catch basin, or go down and drain in the golf course, but they can't just drain onto the neighbor's property. Did you capture that in the, those options in the comments?
Yeah, I believe so, I'm just trying to find it. So number seven, approval subject to conditions and recommendations contained in your comments stated 5/20.
Yeah, they weren't in those comments, it came after that.
The construction plans must be revised to include rear yard drain tile system.
Okay.
Connection stubs. Okay.
That'll do.
Perfect. This back on in case you guys want to take a closer look, but yeah, the plans really haven't changed much, except for the lot lines, lot size. And the width, I suppose, but the tree plan's the same, general layout's the same. Any questions for the developer?
I guess I'm just looking at like the lot size compared to the other lot sizes adjacent to that property.
Yeah, they're definitely going to be a little more narrow than the surrounding houses.
Sure.
But they should be the same style, like Luke said, beholden to the covenants of the HOA, so it shouldn't stand out like a sore thumb, I don't think, I think it's going to be actually kind of hard to pick it out after a few years.
Yes, that's what I was.
When that area was around, it was developed, the minimum lot size was 85 foot lot width and 12,000 square feet, and so these are.
12,000 square feet, 77.
77, so slightly narrower, but not like 65, like the new developments.
Okay. So it won't be like a drastic change?
Think so.
It'd be hard to notice, especially driving by it, if you're walking by maybe.
Eight feet, plus it's, they're oriented differently than the neighbors.
And with the golf course being open on one side, that will maybe seem more open as well.
Sure. Great.
Side by side.
And the seven foot setbacks, and it's on both sides, or?
Just on the interior side setbacks, so seven and seven on the sides, and then the outsides do meet the minimum 10 feet. So we got wider towards the neighbors and the clubhouse.
Okay. Questions, if anybody else has any.
So the two outside lot lines will still be, a 10 foot setback will be imposed?
A minimum of 10 feet, I might exceed that.
Be seven?
Yeah.
See if I can go to the gearing plan. Show it a little bit.
Anybody have any other questions?
It's too blurry. I think it says 12 on that side, or no, that's 10.
This side I think is also 10, but it's hard to read.
And there's no concerns with keeping the pool or anything, I'm guessing?
On the city side?
Is the planning commission ready to make a recommendation, or?
Yeah, so I, do we want to do them separately or together? Doesn't matter.
I think either one works, together's fine, I think.
So the recommendation to zone the property PUD, right?
Approve the PUD zoning?
Yep, and then?
Approve the preliminary plat?
Yep.
Or recommend approval.
Recommend approval for the preliminary plat, okay. So I'll make the recommendation to zone the property PUD and the recommendation to approve the preliminary plat.
I'll second.
Right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Warren, it passed, happy birthday. It is his birthday, by the way.
It'll go to the city council, it's planned for the second meeting in July.
Okay. Thank you.
Second public hearing, consider amendment to zoning ordinance regarding accessory structures.
So this is a carryover from last meeting as well, we discussed a few changes, some resident requests concerning accessory structures. During that process, we found a few things in the city ordinance that could be amended or outright removed following the last update to the ordinance. So we've incorporated feedback from the city attorney into an updated draft ordinance as of today, which has been included as an addition to the planning commission packet. So here it is. So the first two section, or the first section is deleted in its entirety. There's a few sections that were deleted in its entirety, just dealing with conditional use permits. The intent of the city being that conditional use permits will no longer be needed for accessory structures due to the increased standards allowed. Third part of that, the kind of the biggest part of that, the reason we started this was to increase the height. So height has been increased in all districts to at least 24 feet, 26 feet for industrial. The city's land use table has been amended to reflect the actual code and the intent of the code for moving the conditional use for accessory structures from several districts, and adding them in as permitted accessory uses in several districts as well. Other than that, it's basically just cleanup of the language concerning conditional use permits, or language concerning conditional use permits being deleted. So it's a lot of cleanup, basically increasing the height cleanup, and then there is that exception that we talked about last time, that accessory structure shall not exceed the height of the primary structure, except for lots greater than one acre. So for acreage lots, they could have a 24 foot accessory structure and say a 15 foot house. If that's something you're open to, and that would just apply to lots greater than one acre. So now you're being asked to recommend adoption of the proposed ordinance, amending Title 11 of the city code concerning revisions to the zoning ordinance as presented.
Okay, thank you. I will open the public hearing regarding the amendment to zoning ordinance regarding accessory structures at 7:20 PM. And there's no one online, right?
I need to double check. Don't think so.
No.
Nope.
Okay, thank you. All right. I have to ask, right, three times?
Yeah, I have to ask three times.
Like, nobody's here. Okay. All right, well, I'll close the public hearing at 7:20 PM, then. Any comments, questions regarding this update?
No questions, we've talked about this a lot, thank you.
We have. All right, so make a recommendation to amend the zoning ordinance, accessory structures as it's written?
Mm-hmm. Okay. Presented.
Okay, I'll make the recommendation, anyone want a second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Yeah. Public hearing, consider request to rezone 641 Main Street property from urban reserve to institutional.
The city purchased the property surrounding city hall, six addresses, 641 Main Street. In 2021, the property contains approximately 5.3 acres. In 2008, in a facilities plan, identified the area surrounding the existing city hall campus for future expansion of the municipal campus. And that was the reason that the city council moved forward with the acquisition. Staff and the city attorney recommend that the property be rezoned at this time to institutional. All properties that are city owned are typically zoned institutional. Title 1138 of the city code and Minnesota statutes 462, 357 allow for city initiated zoning amendments. So the current property as, or the property is currently zoned urban reserve, which is that kind of preservation district that, for lands that are retained in a natural state or an agricultural use pending development. They typically sit in a urban reserve district until the property is developed. At this time, however, we're proposing to rezone it to institutional. This is a zoning district that is, provides specifically for facilities devoted to serving the public, it's unique in that the primary objective of uses within this district is the provision of services to the public. Frequently, it could be nonprofit, a church, a school, a city hall, a library, things like that. So we're just trying to clean this up at this point, so this is the current zoning map, you can see in blue the properties that are undeveloped to the east of city hall are that blue urban reserve. And what is being, here's the zoning map that's being proposed, just kind of combining it with the city hall zoning district. Any zoning ordinance amendment, or zoning amendments, zoning map amendments require a public hearing, and asking to hold a public hearing and make a recommendation to the city council regarding the proposed zoning map amendment.
Thank you, Renee. All right, I will open the public hearing at 7:23 PM regarding rezoning 641 Main Street property from urban reserve to institutional. Okay, thank you. And nobody's present, so I'll close the public hearing at 7:24 PM. Any comments or questions from the commission?
No questions.
Okay. All right, anyone want to make the recommendation?
So moved.
All right, anyone want a second?
I'll second.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, thank you. Onto general business. Consider draft ordinance amending Title 12-5-9-1 of the city code concerning street standards.
Okay, and I'll handle this one as well. This is an item that has not been introduced to the planning commission previously. The subdivision ordinance contains minimum standards for street construction that are typically part of development, new residential or commercial industrial developments. Upon review of these standards, the city engineer and the city attorney and myself are recommending certain changes to the street standards. Amendments to the subdivision ordinance do not require a public hearing, and they actually don't require planning commission recommendation. However, because this deals with development and things that you deal with, I, we did want to review this with you. So in the, in your packet, there was just the existing street standards. I've copied only the ones that are proposed for change into this slideshow, so first of all, temporary cul-de-sacs, our current code states that when you have a situation where a temporary cul-de-sac is constructed pending future extension, you know, when the next property develops, our code currently states that we would collect a financial security from the developer who is constructing that temporary cul-de-sac for its eventual removal. Well, it could be 20 years before that street is extended, we don't know. And we don't want to be holding that financial security, and also the city attorney believes it's a violation of some certain case law that has, it's called, referred to as the Harsstead case, which really limits the city's ability to collect certain fees for streets, street improvements. So we're just striking that financial security requirement for future removal. And instead, the next developer who would develop the next property would be responsible for the removal. Street centerline gradients, this is purely an engineering item. Design issue that Rich has recommended. In addition to our subdivision ordinance requirements, there's also this engineering manual, like it's much more detailed, so that is commonly updated by the city engineer's office and guides the engineers designing improvements. Vertical curves, similarly, Rich has suggested in addition to that standard. Half streets are an area when you would dedicate only a half of a right of way on a property line, and then with the intent that the next developer would dedicate that next half of the right of way, we typically don't allow that. Half streets are prohibited except in extenuating circumstances. There's a reference to collecting an escrow. And the city attorney has also stated that this is in violation of a more recent case law that would prohibit the cities from collecting a fee for this, so states in such cases, when a half street is platted, a developer shall provide an escrow in an amount to construct the full street. And the city attorney said that's just clearly not, not legal. So that is being struck. We do have a provisional ordinance that has a maximum length for a permanent cul-de-sac of 500 feet. I just wanted to add on to here that sometimes you have a street that is a temporary cul-de-sac, will eventually be extended, so that streets terminating in a temporary cul-de-sac pending future extension are exempt from the 500 foot requirement, it's intended for permanent cul-de-sacs. Change regarding the soil investigation section recommended by Rich. Boulevards, this really is what started our analysis, currently our code requires that when a developer puts a street in, they have to sod the boulevard. It could be several years before the homes are built out, the sod would often die, not getting watered, so it's our feeling that seating and blanketing is equivalent to sod and maybe superior in some cases, so we're adding that detail to allow seating and blanketing the boulevards. And then street lighting, and this is something I might ask Rich to explain, we have a street light spacing requirement in our code currently. And it currently states that streetlights need to be placed at least every 350 feet. And Rich has really been requiring just street lighting at the intersections rather than throughout the streets, so.
We had a conflict between this code and the engineering manual, which is geared towards traffic safety, which was a decision made quite a while back. So the engineering requires lights at every intersection and at some curves, and then no more, no more than 600 feet apart, so if you have a super long block, you might have a light in the middle. In case you're interesting, interested, the thinking is not that we're trying to light things. We're trying to highlight things. We want to announce, here's an intersection, this is important, pay attention. It may help illuminate a pedestrian or a cat or something in the intersection as well, but the headlights do that too. So it's really, they, they're, they're almost performing more like a sign that you don't have to read, it's just, that's, here's something different. You probably noticed it yourself, you come in where things are lit, you just feel different, and that's the idea. So putting them every 350 feet would add quite a few street lights that we'd have to pay for and charge for. So the real key is the intersections, there aren't too many stretches actually where there are 600 foot stretches where you, you know, have an intermediate light, but there's some. But it's just, you know, a happy compromise, I guess, too, you know, here's the street, but the real key is the intersections.
So I don't know if you have any opinion about any of these items, particularly the street lighting one, but if you have any input that you'd like me to carry forward to the city council, we're just asking you to provide feedback and a recommendation on these proposed changes.
I for one appreciate the limiting of streetlights, I understand the whole light pollution thing too, you know, we do live far enough out. It'd be nice to see more stars, that's one of the benefits of our community, so thank you.
Yeah, I don't have any additional comments or recommendations, all of them seem pretty straightforward. Okay. So I'll make the recommendation.
Sure.
And anybody want to, do we have a second?
True, I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, miscellaneous. Community development.
I am not extremely prepared, but I thought I would just let you know about a couple of things that we think are going to be coming up. We have been contacted by the developer that built the apartment buildings over by the firehouse. Their building is full and they have a waiting list, and they would like to immediately move into construction of the second building. It does require a plating of the second lot. So that will likely be at one of the next two planning commission meetings for a public hearing for a one lot plat. And we have also been contacted, a couple of years ago, the planning commission reviewed a concept plan for 80 acres that was out near the school. Joe Sullivan was the developer, and I believe it came to the commission for review. So it would be just immediately east of the parcel that's getting developed now as the. Um, so it would be just immediately east of the parcel that's getting developed now as the Highlands at Eagleview. Um, they share a property boundary and, uh, they, and Joe Sullivan is also the person that, um, the developer that entitled the Parkway Meadows plat. Um, so he has requested a meeting with the city to re-initiate, uh, development of that parcel. So I expect that he'll be moving into an application for preliminary plat this fall on that eighty acres. Um, however, it does require annexation, so that could, um, hold it up a little bit, but I think maybe, uh, we would, we usually only review one concept plan, you know, if possible before the planning commission, but since it has been a couple of years since the commission has looked at it, um, maybe we'll run another concept plan through potentially. The city, um, did recently, uh, close on the two single-family detached homes right on Main Street near the gas station. So, um, nothing will change there for the time being. Uh, renters, I believe, will stay. And I think that is all that I have. You have any updates?
No.
Yes. Have any questions?
I don't really have any questions.
Okay. Um, I know that, you know, since we're in summer and vacations and everything, if anybody knows that they're gonna be not at the next meeting in July or August, it would be helpful to know. It sounds like you might be gone in August. Okay, for sure.
I'll be here.
Okay. All right.
Okay, all right. Anyone want to make a motion to adjourn the meeting?
I'll make a motion.
Anyone want a second?
A second.
All right. All right, meeting adjourned at seven thirty-six P M. Thanks, everyone.